First thing I do, if you want to come up to the podium here, to the microphone. Yeah, all right. We will call the city council regular meeting to order for Monday, March 3rd, 2025. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance and we actually have Thomas here who's going to lead us in it, so. Come on up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Cordis.
Here.
Mayor Hoyt.
Here.
Councilmember Bernat.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
All right, any changes to the agenda? All right, unless there's any changes, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Holly, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, next item on the agenda would be our citizen comments. If there's anyone in attendance that's wishing to speak, feel free to come to the podium at this time. If not, we'll move on to item seven, which is our consent agenda. I would seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Jake.
Second.
Second by Nick, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, our only action item tonight under new business is item 12-1, which is our Public Works 2024 annual update. John.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. I first want to introduce, some of you have met him, some have not, our Public Works Superintendent, Eric Whitmer is also here this evening. Eric is available to answer questions, I'll be doing the talking, but he'll be doing more talking next year. And he's brought two of his children also, and we're happy to have them here.
Welcome.
So this is our 2024 update, so presented in 2025. Just a reminder, the public works service areas, streets, lighting, sanitary sewer, water, stormwater, fleet, solid waste, which is contracted to DSI, engineering, GIS, and natural resources. The group that makes it all happen, more toward the top, less toward the bottom, no offense to Rich, but we have, I'm on the bottom, so that's, in Public Works, we have 20 full-time equivalents, and we now have 10 Public Works maintenance workers, thanks to city council's approval of that last year, we hired two, we went from eight to 10 last year. And a lot of these staff are new, as you'll see on the next slide. Our most recent change, senior administrative support technician, so Tori Wolf, has agreed to become our Public Works administrative assistant, and that action is scheduled for the next city council meeting. So staff changes in 2024, Ben Van Blarcom retired, Joe Cook, Steve Groves, and Isaac Sherbal, all Public Works maintenance workers, joined us in 2024, as did McKenna Rodine, our water resources specialist, Ben Humley. Eric started in at the end of July. We had three seasonals, so if you look at it, 30% of our full-time staff was new to the city in 2024. So there's a lot of acclimation orientation, finding out where the knowledge bases complement each other, a lot of that going on over the past, the past year, really. So accomplishments, the 2024 street improvement project was right next to Farmington Elementary, and we had very wet weather. You'll see that based on our water pumping, it certainly turned up there, but we did complete that on time despite the wet weather conditions. It did cost us a little bit more to do soil corrections, but we accomplished our goal of having it open, substantial completion by the time school opened. We expedited preparation of the Duchene Parkway Spruce Street intersection realignment design because of the apartment project, and we have a bid opening for that project this week. We evaluated options and purchased a new salt storage facility. We've done extensive geotechnical exploration, actually relocated the salt storage facility to reduce the amount of soil correction we have to do, and we'll start that soil correction this spring, and then they'll be able to erect the soil, salt storage facility. We completed the 2024 Mill and Overlay project. We had, I was mentioning, nearly eight full winter maintenance events and 10 salting events, so that shows up in our snow budget. Both last winter and our most recent winter were late winters, last winter was almost nothing, but very similar as far as the number of events. So we've saved money there on salt use and overtime, things like that. We also had some new equipment that we purchased this year, and really, the staff, Eric Glenn and mechanics, Ron and Damon take the lead in identifying equipment and pricing that out, and talking with the other staff about functionality, what do they want, what doesn't work, what, where have we had problems with maintenance. We've initiated the industrial park ditch cleanout project. That project's taken longer than expected. One of the challenges is the ditch runs right through Northern Natural Gas property, and it kind of clips XL Energy's property, and those are two agencies, not, Northern Natural Gas has been very responsive, XL, you know, we're hoping to minimize any impact, and then a farmer. So the goal is this spring to go out and take soil samples and probes to find the original ditch invert, the bottom of it. Northern Natural Gas already has a concern because they have pipelines passing underneath that ditch, they want to be sure they don't lose cover. So those are some of the design issues that come up there. We updated our MS4 documents and processes, McKenna did a fantastic job with that, she hit the ground running, her background was with the MPCA, so she, she spoke that language, she knew exactly what to do and got it done. We've initiated three stormwater pond maintenance and water quality improvement projects, and you'll see those coming for feasibility reports in the near future. Completed three and a half citywide street sweeping, so typically it's spring and fall, but we really want to do more street sweepings, because the more we pick up, the less goes down to storm sewer, the less goes into our ponds and stormwater ponds. We fully implemented the OpenGov software for fleet asset management and supported the transfer of legacy fleet data, and Damon really took the lead on that, and he's done a fantastic job with that. Ron and Damon, lead mechanic and mechanic respectively, received the police chief's award of merit for their exceptional work on the turnovers of vehicles and having everything ready to go and when the PD needed it, so appreciate their recognition. Danielle continues to provide extensive GIS services to Public Works and then many other departments, community development, parks, she's a great asset to have on staff. I pulled this out separately, we administered 131 right-of-way permits. So here's a breakdown of who requested those permits. Charter, Frontier, HBC, and MetroNet are all fiber-type permits. Dakota Electric and XL Electricity, obviously, and Minnesota Energy for gas permits. Out of those 73 gas permits, a lot of those are small service-type permits. The fiber permits is really where we end up spending all of our time. We're continuing to actively implement the approved EAB management plan, so in 2024, we removed over 1,000 ash trees and stumps. We administered the EAB grant, preparing for EAB, and the shade tree grant, which is a half million dollars. An additional 30 non-ash trees were removed, those come up when we have property owners concerned that a tree might be falling on their property, or it's in poor health in the boulevard, things like that, so Ben goes out to evaluate that, and if it's a hazard, then we do take those out. Reviewed proposed lot surveys for 203 new single-family or townhouse building permits. You'll see that 203 number, I think, again in community development's presentation, that's where it comes from. Every new building permit for a single-family or townhouse goes through an engineering review to verify that the grades they're proposing fit with the grading plan. And 73 as-built grading surveys were completed, so that's our engineering technician, Rich Schimmel, visiting the site, checking the turf, checking, make sure the monuments are on the corners before we sign off and release the escrow. And we completed warranty inspections and final acceptance of Whispering Fields, Whispering Field Second, and Vita Teva Third. Interesting issue came up on, we recently completed, it wasn't 2024, but Fairhill, the manhole covers, we had the wrong manhole covers on, we literally could not get the manhole covers off, about a dozen sanitary manholes when we went out there. And it took the supplier two or three attempts to make sure we had the right lid such that we could pop it off when we needed to, but that was, that's something that's caught in those warranty inspections, we just kind of go through, make sure everything's working. Additional accomplishments, so over 693 million gallons of water. Last, 2023, that was up around 830 million gallons, so that's really the result of a wet season, that's what you're seeing there. We also initiated our first annual water system leak survey, that was listening to about 50 miles of Maine, so that's about a third of the city, and what that does is proactively identify where we may have water loss, and we repair it proactively, not on a weekend when it's raining out and right before a holiday or something, which seems to happen. We also completed the Farmington East and West Serviceability Analysis, that was to respond to utility inquiries as a result, primarily of the two major AUARs that were processed. We did complete the replacement of the well five retaining wall. The Department of Health and requirements that came down from the federal government, we completed a water, initial water service line inventory and submitted the results by the completion date to the Minnesota Department of Health. That's a process that's ongoing, so as we get more information, we keep researching it, and we identify what those are, we put it into the database, and that database is viewable by the public, and we have that information on the website. We flushed 1,359 hydrants twice, and we cleaned over almost 117,000 feet of sanitary sewer and televised 153,000 feet of sanitary sewer, so that was a, I think the weather had something to do with that, where we could get a lot more of that done. Some years, when we had eight staff, a lot of these are things that you need more than one staff person to go out and do, so we had three seasonals, and we had 10 maintenance workers, and I think you're seeing the results there, that we got, got more done, certainly in televising and cleaning. So goals for 2025, completing a citywide natural resource inventory update, it was last completed in 2010, and the timing is very fortuitous, because you heard Dakota County talk about the green waste and whatnot, and we want a solid inventory of our natural resources, not parks, trails, things like that, but the natural resources, really focusing on that, that we have to build on as we get into our comp plan update and as we get into conversations with the county. Right-of-way management is a big area, identifying any potential built-out areas of the city from a fiber perspective. So some neighborhoods in the city have had two fiber carriers go through their yards, and it's to the point where we have limited space in the public right-of-way and easements, and we need to be able to indicate that we're built out, we don't have any space for additional fiber. And that's, I think, a legal test that we have to meet and make sure we have the backup for that, but we're running out of public right-of-way and easement for new fiber, and also, I don't think it's reasonable to expect that property owners, when they put so much effort into their yard, can have them dug up a third time for another carrier. We are transitioning all the right-of-way permit administration to rich. We're updating the right-of-way permit construction requirements, and also implementing permit issuance requirements, going into winter conditions to make sure we don't have permit activity going on when we're trying to do snow and ice control, and limitations on active permits, so they need to wrap up one permit, get it restored and whatnot, before they're allowed to move on, instead of issuing a permit for a large geographic area. The city has engineering guidelines and detail plates dating back to 2019, we want to develop standard specifications, so when we do a project, the specifications are the same if they're from the city. This is to benefit the contractors, they're looking for continuity from project to project, so there's no surprises, instead of missing something because one consultant did it one way, another consultant showed it another way. This is very common to have standard specification sections, it just saves contractors having to dig for information, if it's the same, it's the same every year. And also, we'd like to implement the use of Brian to reduce overall salt use. From a water perspective, we want to identify the next elevated water storage site, that study is near completion right now, so you'll be seeing that in the near future. We want to secure the site and then secure a construction contract, and extend trunk water main as needed to connect to the new water storage site. We anticipate that we'll have, our next storage will be an elevated tank, but then after that, it would likely be ground storage, a large tank at grade or partially below grade, instead of a tall tank. We'll continue to the process to identify a site for well 10, as I indicated previously, that's about a two-year process that has started. We also want to install a trunk water main on 190th and develop a joint powers with Empire for an emergency interconnect, so we can share water as needed if they have a major outage on their side. That would include an interconnect vault with the trunk water main project. Initiate infrastructure expansion or rehab to meet new development needs, so that's kind of a general, as we have new developments come through, we want to be sure we're keeping up and staying ahead of it with our infrastructure. Evaluate street lighting standards, maintenance and funding needs. The city, XL Energy had a program, a prepay option for streetlights many years ago, and it was good for 25 years, and at the end of 25 years, they don't do any further maintenance aside from replacing bulbs and whatnot. We have about 170 lights that have expired warranties right now, so if something happens, we have to decide, do we take them out, do we take them over, and do we do the repairs and the new installation? We've got probably another 300 to 350 lights that are still in the warranty period, but that's something that's coming down the road, so we need to have a conversation about what we want to do. Increase public works transparency via expanded external communication, so this is really where Tori's going to be able to help us a lot. We've got Ben on board, Eric, McKenna, Danielle, that can prepare that information, and we need, you know, Tori can prepare additional information, clean it up, package it for various consumption, the newsletter, the website, flyers, and things like that. We've, we've have a lot of potential to do more outreach from a public work standpoint. Continue onboarding and integration of new public work staff, that's going to be a, like I said, it's an ongoing issue, and we're going to be doing that all year. From a roadway standpoint, we'll update the condition ratings for a third of the city, this is keeping our PCI data fresh and a firm foundation for decision-making. We want to complete the 2025 street improvements and the Mill and Overlay project. We also want to initiate the 2026 street improvements in April at the latest. Our goal, and it's ambitious, but we want to bid that project in December of this year. Contractors, utility and street contractors, they get very quiet in December and January. I talked to one contractor a couple weeks ago, and they had 120 projects generally in the South Metro area bidding in the next four weeks. And so that's what we're trying to avoid, just having contractors filled up or just not have time to respond. So we also are evaluating alternatives for a traditional seal coat process, so the traditional seal code is you put oil down, you put a aggregate down, you roll it, then you sweep it up, and then you sweep it out of your house for the next year. That seems to be what happens. We're looking at options for that, where it's more a betonist-based process, where there's less sweeping up after, it's more integrated into the oil and the topping that we put on the roadways. And then replace retiring public work staff in a timely manner such that there's no drop in staffing or service levels. Ron Lay, our lead mechanic, will be retiring this year, Jeff Jones is retiring this year. We want to make sure that, first of all, they're imparting their knowledge on the folks that are here now, but then that we're not, we don't have gaps in our staff, so we're, you know, we're without two people in a critical time, which is midsummer, so. It's a lot of fast talking. Another goal for 2025, for next year, is to use more images in my PowerPoint presentation. This is pretty dry, it's a lot of, you know, a lot of data, a lot of metrics and things like that. I'm looking forward to having a more user-friendly, viewer-friendly presentation for next year, and I'm sure Eric will be able to help me with that, as well as Tori and others, so. With that, happy to respond to any questions, and I do want to thank you again for your support, because we can't do what we do unless we have your support.
Thank you, sir. Steve?
Wow, that is, that is really impressive, John, I mean, you, you obviously show up at our work sessions, and we're talking about, you know, a different thing, we're talking about a speed study, we're talking about, you know, getting ahead of different things, but when you see it out there, that, you know, with all the things that you and your team are doing, it is unbelievable, so please extend my gratitude to everybody that works, you know, with you, under, under you, in collaboration with you. And of course, the stuff you didn't even mention, you know, coordinating with Deanna, coordinating with Kelly, coordinating with Kim, so I mean, it's really just amazing all the work you're doing for our department. I do have one question, though. This thought occurred to me this summer as HBC was going through our neighborhood, you know, we do have, I don't think they're a legacy utility company yet, but we do have a company in our neighborhood, probably throughout the city, that isn't quite as popular as maybe it used to be. So do we have any policy out there where if a company essentially leaves our community, that they have to take the stuff with them, so we don't have, like, abandoned equipment sitting out there in kind of that utility box right-of-way area?
Mayor and councilmembers, we do not have that, and I've not heard that anything's been abandoned, because if they have conduit in the ground, it has some value, so I'd be very surprised if they're kind of moving on from there.
No, I'm just saying, if that were to occur, there's none abandoned at the moment, I'm just saying that if, for example, a company were to leave the community, let's say at some point, 10, 15 years down the road, you know, we just can't keep up with technology, it's too much money, we're going to go a different direction, fiber's too expensive for us, so we're, we're all thanks for whatever, I mean, can we, can we request, or, do you see where I'm going with that?
At a minimum, we get as-bills of where their facilities are, so we know what's abandoned and what's not abandoned, so from a utility locating standpoint, we can recognize that, but that's something to probably look at on the code, I don't recall that we have a requirement specific to that, but we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, it's nothing urgent, just something that popped into my head.
And generally, a lot of the telecommunications, it's smaller diameter pipe, a lot of it's plastic, so we're not as concerned about it settling or caving in as we would be if a storm sewer, sanitary sewer was abandoned and it wasn't filled. You know, this is small diameter pipe typically in plastic, which lasts much longer than, you know, clay and.
Yeah, and just to confirm, John, I'm not talking about the stuff in the ground, I'm talking about the, essentially, the towers above the ground.
Okay. Jake?
No questions for me, just a couple of comments. First of all, thank you, John, for sharing tonight, it was a long list of accomplishments. To go off of your comment about maybe next year adding more pictures and making it more flashy, I was talking to somebody this weekend about what was on the agenda for city council this week, and I said, it's going to be a light meeting, it's just the 2024 Public Works update, and they said, that sounds like the most boring meeting ever. And I said, it's not the most flashy subject to talk about, but it's important. So kind of like Steve was saying, share our thanks to your staff for everything they do, they, you know, keep us safe, keep the water flowing, and everything they do throughout the year. And then you also made mention about increased transparency going into the new year. Specifically, again, thank you for your proactive communication in the, I'll call it, construction zones, we had some work, Mill and Overlay project done in front of our house this summer, and Rich Schimmel came to our house and dropped off the flyer, letting us know that it was going to be happening, so I think that's, I appreciated that, and I'm sure other community members appreciate that, when you kind of have that person-to-person communication.
We don't want to surprise anyone, if at all possible. Thank you.
Holly?
I don't have a whole lot to say that hasn't already been said, I think I just marvel every time I see how much of the community Public Works touches, like, in how many different ways, right? And I think it's one of those areas where sometimes people look back at city government and they say, well, there's got to be a better way, or a more efficient way, or an easier way, or a less expensive way to be able to run this, and everything that you do, you do with such intentionality within this department, that there's, it's not just on a whim, it's not just we feel like today, and I appreciate that, because it helps us answer some of those questions, but why? And so, as others have said, and I would echo, just a huge thank you for the entire team, that there's so much that we couldn't possibly wrap our heads around, that you do day in and day out, and are paying attention to, and it's just a nice relief to be able to sit back and say, I trust that John's got this, and his entire team by extension then has this, so that's a pretty awesome spot to be in, from my opinion.
Thank you, will do, and along those lines, one of the great things about having new staff is they bring that knowledge base of how things were done, and we like to look at things we do, and hey, is this the best way to do it, even though we've been doing it this way, but it's an intentional change, not, you know, sort of helter-skelter, so, but we're looking at processes, we can always improve, but we appreciate that it's, it's very intentional.
Well, and in our house, we, we call that road confetti, so if you're, if you find a way to get rid of the road confetti, a lot of people are going to be really excited.
Nick?
As the only other engineer in the room, I would prefer less pictures, more words, more numbers, and maybe a chart or two, please. It's, it's a little bit like a flock of blackbirds, I don't know how to pick one thing, I guess, so maybe the one we haven't talked about as much is the streetlights in the future, I mean, just broadly speaking, at the 10,000-foot level, what kind of options are out there when we talk about starting to replace streetlights? I mean, you look at kind of what the school has done with some of its motion-activated lighting and kind of things like, you know, strategies like that for, despite many of them being kind of broken and non-functional, but, I mean, are those the kind of things you want to start talking about as we go in? If we're talking about large swaths of the city starting to go out of warranty, I mean, what does that future look like?
Yeah, mayor and councilmembers, we are just getting into that. A quick example, we had four lights that were not functioning at the time, I think we've found, you know, so maybe we have two left. We contacted XL Energy, got a price for replacing those lights, it was about $9,000 per light, and, for four lights, and they have options, if you, you can enter into the prepay option again, if you'd like, if we want to, if we decide that's the best route, but they think the life expectancy of their streetlights is 25 to 28 years. So are we getting into a constant replacement of streetlights, or can we do something that's a little more sustainable? We are just starting to evaluate that, and more to come, for sure.
I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I, for one, am just, I'm a country person, so the darker it is at night, the happier I am, so I just get fascinated when I walk down the aisle. down the aisle at Hy-Vee and, you know, the freezers turn on for me. They turn off if I'm not around there. So I don't know why we can't do that with the city, but maybe I'm in a minority there. Great job, otherwise, though.
Thank you.
Yeah, to piggyback on all the things that my peers have said, I think that's what I have the greatest appreciation for is your teams and specifically your comprehensive approach to the data-driven decision-making, right? I mean, a little over six years ago when I started, there was, it was hard to gather a lot of the information, and some of it was outdated. Plans had not been updated in a timely manner. The PCI, the pavement condition index, is one of the, the leading parts of that. Just being able to complete that within our streets and our trails and go back in on the every other in our trails and, you know, every third within the streets, it just, it allows us to plan more effectively and to better use tax dollars moving forward. So we can, you know, not make necessarily arbitrary decisions, but really bed that decision-making in the, in the, in the data that your team continues to put together. You know, and when you get outside of, when you get outside of local government and you're working within a business, we always talk about touchpoints, right? And every time you have an opportunity to touchpoint with your, with your guest or your client, you're always evaluating your service. And I think our team touches a lot more residents in whether it's, you know, flushing out a hydrant or repainting a hydrant or, you know, disalting, the plowing. Like, we have so many touchpoints that even though we don't hear it from our residents, I know that the actions of your department are appreciated, far and beyond what they have been in years past, because that's a small picture. I mean, that's just a snapshot of, of what your team does. And, I mean, I couldn't be more appreciative and more thankful for everything that you guys do. I do have a few questions. I recently received one of those notifications of a leak and to test it. So if I'm a resident that's received one of those letters and I'm not quite sure what that water leak in my house is, what are some best practices that, or things that I would look at first?
So would that be a lead service letter?
No, with the, the leak detection.
Oh, the leak detection?
Yep.
That's, you're looking for, and we don't have the technology to do this necessarily, but you're looking for water, water uses disproportionate from your typical use if your monthly bill has gone up. Some cities have moved to smart meters where property owners can bring up their meter reading, and they can see if they've had a spike in their water use. It, part of it's listening. Essentially, what we're doing for leak detection is listening to the system and hearing, seeing if there is a rush that we can hear, which means there's a leak somewhere because it's a pressurized, it's a closed system. Listening for leaks for water that might be running when nobody is doing anything in the house, that sort of thing. And then, I mean, just general awareness of, of what you have, you know, from an exterior and interior standpoint, making sure your hose bibs are shut off and, and, you know, emptied in the fall so they're not frozen and cracked over the winter, things like that, draining your pipes down if they're going to irrigation or something like that.
So to keep residents from, like, not freaking out, thinking that they have an underground leak and they've got to tear up their yard, would something as little as a toilet that needs to be maintained and that constant running, would that be something that we'd be looking out for?
Absolutely. People are surprised how much water a, a, a simple running toilet can consume. I've had, on more than one occasion, a property owner, well, it was just my toilet running, you know, we were going to have that fixed. Well, that toilet running, that pencil-sized stream running through the system, but 24 hours a day adds up to a lot of water.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yep.
I appreciate that. My second question is pertaining more to Farmington Fix. Do you find that the amount of usage of things being reported has increased with the update in our website? Or would you say it was average to what it was prior to the update? Do you feel like you're getting more reports of?
I would say it might be, it might be down a little bit. Part of that might be a lot of our Farmington fixes were related to trees and what's happening and when's my tree going to be taken out. And we've communicated a lot about that. So the trees, the tree amount has dropped down, I think. So overall, I'd probably say it's down a little bit in the past year or so.
Good. Thank you. I appreciate it. I don't have any other questions. Again, just thank you so much on behalf of the entire community for everything that you and your team does. It's, it's, it does not go unnoticed and is very much appreciated. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Absolutely.
All right, roundtable time. Go ahead.
No report from me this week.
All right.
Sorry.
Nick?
Nothing from me.
Holly?
It's going to be a snowstorm. Maybe. So parking restrictions are still on, right, till April? So if there is snow on the ground and you don't want your truck or car or anything else, put someplace where you can't find it. Make sure you park it in your driveway so that all of our hard-working public works people can get by and open up our streets again, assuming that we get the amount of snow that we're supposed to get.
Thank you.
All right, can I have my time back for one second?
Sure.
Welcome, David.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
I hit an easy softball in front of me that I wasted.
I thought I was going to have that easy softball, but, welcome, David. Welcome to the team. We're glad to have you.
Gary, what, what is the date? Actually, Holly ironically did steal an item from me because I was going to write that up. But what is the parking restriction date?
April 1st. Goes through, goes through April 1st.
Could you theoretically pull an April fool's joke by parking somebody's car who, like, you know, a family member, a neighbor you don't like, and maybe it gets told? Or is it cut off before that? Not that I would do that to Jake, but...
You'd probably want to do that on the 31st.
Okay.
Thanks, Steve.
And welcome, David. It's great to have you here.
I too want to welcome David Chansky to our team, and he's the new Assistant City Administrator. And welcome, and it's been great having you here so far. So thank you.
Shirley?
Same. Welcome, David. It's great to have you here.
All right, David, you're on the spot now.
Well, I'm very happy to be here. It's, this was day three, so I'm still actively drinking from the fire hose. But Lynn, can rest the shirt. I will be back in the morning.
Good.
So we accepted an offer on our house in Brainerd yesterday, and we're very excitedly looking forward to relocating in April. That's what I've got for you today.
Thanks, sir, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Deanna?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Welcome, David, to the team. I would just like to let everybody know that, you know, January takes forever, right, to get through. It feels like the month that keeps on giving. And then February is over in a blink of an eye, and we're now in March. And this is when a lot of activity starts happening in the Community and Economic Development Department with building permits and all of that. But also, we have been invited to do a number of speaking engagements to really tell Farmington's story and get out there and continue to market all the wonderful things that are happening in this community. So I'll be speaking twice this month, so I'm really excited to be able to share Farmington's story. Just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you, ma'am. John?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, David. Just to show how we work as a team, when I got back to my seat, Deanna told me exactly how long I talked for and how much with Q and A, because last year, I was trying to gauge, you know, how long my presentation should be. So I was clocking everyone's, you know, 15 minutes, 25 minutes. So I appreciate having that data.
I do, though, have to tell you that he writes down all of those times things start and stop. And I was just trying to do him a favor, too, so that his notes would be complete.
Of course, I have it.
Well, he wanted to make sure he was on point for if Shirley ever took vacation again, that somebody could fill in with clerk duties.
I've had to fill, "Don't take vacation."
He's a backup.
David, did you know what you were getting into?
John can clear, John can be the backup clerk. I've done that before. He can have it.
I do want to remind everyone, load limits went on in the metro area today. So we typically don't issue overweight permits unless it's a delivery to a business. But for construction and whatnot, typically, we had a call. They're doing some concrete work at the Quick Trip on Pile and Knob. We said you just have to shorten your loads until load limits go off. This year, they may go off fairly quickly, but if you go onto MnDOT's website, you can see the historical dates on and off in the metro area. But just a reminder, load limits are on.
Thanks, sir. Kelly?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On tonight's consent agenda, you promoted Dan Schmidt from Park Maintenance Worker to Lead Park Maintenance Worker. I want to congratulate to Dan and well-deserved position for him and look forward to him growing in that new role. Seasonal job postings, they are out there. We have Recreation Assistance, 15-plus years of age, and then Seasonal Park Maintenance, 18 years of age and older. So hop onto the city's website, farmingtonmn.gov to apply. Probably only a couple more weeks to apply, and then we'll start interviewing. And welcome, David. Happy to have you here, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, ma'am. Kim?
I'd also like to welcome David to our team. Look forward to working with you as well. Just a reminder to our viewers that Washington County will be sending out valuation notices this month, and this is the value that your taxes will be based on for next year. And so they will also have some information on there with regards to if you want to appeal that valuation. So if you do not like that valuation, this would be the time and place to do it. They'll have those instructions.
Thank you, ma'am. Deputy Chief Seem?
Thank you. Welcome, David. Otherwise, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Chief?
Welcome. Was it David? Welcome, and I brought a puppy.
Yes.
Yay!
Sorry, Miller, come in.
Come on! I see the leash. Oh, my goodness.
Chief, would you mind doing a...
Explanation.
Yeah. Chief, would you mind doing a quick recap of what the dog is for?
For sure, for sure. This is Moose and his handler, Officer Kyle Miller. Moose is our new employee wellness dog. He's currently in training. He's going to be in training for, for quite a while, I suppose. But, but yeah, he's, he's here to lift spirits. See him looking at it. Everybody's smiling. It's already working.
I love it. I hope there's a shot of that on TV.
He's doing great so far. His trainers are really loving him. They say he's super smart. We're hoping by the end we can start to teach him some punt tricks for community events when we're interacting with the public.
Awesome. And, and as a reminder, for those that had not caught this in the past, through sponsorship with Enterprise, we received the funding that covered the costs of the acquisition of our dog. And so another great community asset and all the things. Yeah. The only thing I have to add on top of what, all the good information that's been shared, again, welcome, David. Welcome to the team. I, I know in the short time that we've had to chat, you'd be a tremendous asset to the team and look forward to all the collaboration that we're going to do over the years to come. For those watching, don't forget the daylight savings time. Thank you, John, for the reminder. Daylight savings time is Saturday night into Sunday morning. So, yep, there we go. Hopefully, we dodge the snow that's supposed to be here tomorrow night into Wednesday. And outside of that, shop local and support Farmington in all the ways and seek a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion. Go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Holly, second by Steve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned at 7:42.